Welcome, everybody. This is the meeting of the West Windsor zoning board. This is to advise that notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved for such or similar announcements on September 17th, 2024, mailed to Princeton Packet, Trenton Times, and West Windsor Plainsboro News on September 17th, 2024, and filed with township clerk on September 17th, 2024. Sam, I guess, call the roll. Okay, I will make note that the application ZB 2403, 24 Norchester Drive, has been withdrawn. So we will start with the minutes from August 1st, 2024. I only had one thing on page four, which was just completing the sentence. Chairwoman Abby announced that the planning board will hold the hearing on the issue of zoning in Barren City on September 4th. Does anybody have any other changes?
Yes, I do. Susan, thank you. I think probably everybody got the revised resolution for the one that we did last time. And I had some comments. I think everybody's gotten the revised resolution.
Are you talking about the resolution or right now we're doing the minutes?
And it's reflected in the minutes. On the minutes, on page three, under your comments there, I would suggest to harmonize it with the proposed resolution that we substitute the following wording for your second bullet point. And I'll give, I can give Sam a copy of this. I would substitute adjacent to 14 Barren Avenue, the side yard will be 8.83 feet.
Where is that on?
Well, it's on page three of the minutes for your second bullet point. Because that was the issue. There is actually an encroachment, but in other words, the side yard is a lot smaller than it would be otherwise. So I would substitute the wording adjacent to 14 Barren Avenue, the side yard will be 8.83 feet.
I'm sorry, John, where on the page are you? On page three of the minutes?
Three of the minutes.
Right.
Under Chairwoman Abby commented.
Okay.
So for the second bullet point.
Okay.
Okay, I would substitute this wording. And that would be in harmony with the amended resolution.
Right.
That we worked on. So I would like to make that substitution if the board will agree.
So what do you recommend? There's no further encroachment against?
I would substitute for that second bullet point, I would substitute adjacent to 14 Barren Avenue, the side yard will be 8.83 feet. To clarify.
Adjacent to? Adjacent to what? Five Barren?
Adjacent to 14 Barren Avenue, the side yard will be 8.83 feet.
That's an amendment to the minutes.
Yeah, an amendment to the minutes, right. So take, strike the second bullet point and just substitute this wording if you.
Eight point? Eight point what? Eight point what? Thirty-two?
Eight point eight-three feet.
It's 10 inches.
Well, yeah. Okay.
And there's no further encroachment on the other side.
No, nothing else.
Right.
That's all I have.
I'll give this.
Or you can make it eight feet, 10 inches. I agree. We're good for that. Because actually, everything was in inches, I think, on the platform.
Well, I really have eight feet and 96 inches.
Yeah, right. Eight feet and, yeah, so nine, eight times.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Susan didn't throw all the bullet points that we came up with at the last meeting. Are they captured in the minutes?
Looks like it.
Okay, because it's the same question we're going to ask for the resolution.
I know.
Those are the bullet points that John's talking about.
No. I know. The resolution, that's what Susan was saying.
Yeah, it harmonizes with the revised resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want them in the minutes and the resolution, that's right.
There's probably needs to be consistency between
Yeah.
the, 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 the conditions listed in the resolution pages four and five and what's in this part of the minutes.
Sam, I can give you a copy of this. I wrote down.
Or I have a piece of paper.
I have it written here. Do we have a motion to approve with the changes recommended?
Also moved.
Moved by John Raider, second.
Oh, second.
John Church. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Well, Sammy can have this.
There'll be two abstentions.
Who abstains?
Mr. Fritkin and Mr. Van Dyck. That's right.
Next up is the resolution for ZB 2402. 12 Barren Avenue. Resolution. Do we have any comments, corrections?
Yeah, I had proposed a revision to the resolution, which has been taken care of. So if it's okay with the board, I would like to.
So Trishka, you already have a copy of the revised?
Yeah, I prepared it and sent it out this afternoon.
And should be copies at everybody's folders and it would have been emailed out.
Yeah, I saw it.
Good. So I'd be happy to review the revisions with the board if you'd like.
Yeah. Does anybody need to hear what the revision is to these?
Yeah, it does say revise at the top, so you'll, if you've got the right.
This is the old one, but I had, I read it online.
Yeah, if anyone wants me to go over the changes or if you have any questions, let me know.
Why don't you read what's in red?
So the first change is on page one and paragraph two, just inserting that the property is a rectangular parcel because later on in the resolution, it was referred to as irregularly shaped. The remainder of the changes are on page four in paragraph A and then new paragraphs B and C. So in paragraph A, we've taken out the words "and irregularly shaped" in the first line, inserted a second sentence right after the first sentence, "in addition to being undersized, it is deficient as to width." And then inserted a new paragraph B, which reads, "The side yard setback on the right end's driveway side of the property will not change. On the left side adjacent to 14 Barren Avenue, the area immediately adjacent to the proposed addition, which includes a bay window, will have an 8.83 foot side yard. The applicant agreed to install screening for privacy along the property line next to the bay window in order to mitigate any impacts from this reduced setback." And then C, it's, actually, the wording hasn't changed. I just put it into its own paragraph to split these out. That's it. These are the changes.
Anybody have any comments or anything else for resolution ZB 2402? Motion to approve? Do we have a second? Okay, moved by Curtis, seconded by John Raider. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Resolution ZB 2402 is approved. Chairs, comments, and correspondence? I have none. If there's any member of the public that wants to.
Just a reminder to the board that tomorrow is the grand opening of the Wawa, which was a zoning board application a while ago. That takes place at 8:30 a.m. The corporate people from Wawa will be there, West Windsor people will be there. I recommend parking for that and not at the Wawa, but at the Cool Queens Market, because there'll be a lot of people there. And you guys know the Wawa parking lot's not that big, so.
I drove by there today.
Did you actually go in?
No, I was on my way somewhere else.
The queues were at the door?
But are we expecting to do anything there?
Smile, glad hands, get to know, get to meet them, welcome them to the community. Other than that, you know, unless you have an agenda.
Drink coffee, get gas.
Tell them all your thoughts and feelings.
One might have caused the other, but you never know.
That's the only, that's the only thing I have.
Thank you, Curtis.
Curtis? To the other department, just going to be, was going to be a hotel when I answered.
Oh, very good. So, no, 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 very good. As our original zoning board review, Henry is correct, was that there was going to be a, and we approved, a three or four story, probably a four story hotel behind the Wawa. Well, that, that never came to pass. And yet the planning board did a review and approved a while ago, a Chick-fil-A on that same site. Yet, Sam, you want to update the board on that matter?
Yeah, after they got their approval, for various reasons, they decided they want to completely redo their application. So they've come back in front of the TRC, the Technical Review Committee. And if you're interested, October 16th, the planning board will hear the new preliminary final site plan for Chick-fil-A.
So they'll be coming to us with a revised, the planning board, that is, with a revised application for the Chick-fil-A behind the Wawa.
With or without the town.
I don't, I don't know about that. Haven't seen any materials yet. It's hard to do that three-dimensional thing on our video billboards.
I just find it strange that they would build a fast food establishment that far away from the main event.
They, they, they can pull it off. So, you know, you know, as Michael Karp, the chair of the planning board, would say, let market forces prevail.
People buy Chick-fil-As.
I was going to say, they're not going to have any trouble getting people coming.
They'll find the answer itself.
Okay, public comment, if there's anyone here for commenting on anything other than what is on the agenda, please step forward. Seeing none. Do I have to close the public comment? As stated previously, ZB 2403 has been withdrawn. Evidently, Sam and I have found a way that it meets the requirements without having to come for variance.
Sam, on the way before?
Norchester.
The expanding above the garage on the house in Norchester?
They, I can answer that one. In our review, we had questioned how they measured the floor area ratio because they included the entirety of the attic space, including those areas that are under ceiling heights of less than seven feet. So they actually went back, they were able to recalculate it, slightly rework it, and they no longer need a variance.
So they don't need a variance.
Yeah, build, construct, it was all interior anyway, but yes, no longer requires any floor area ratio relief. Oh, yeah, it would have been.
Understand how they could go into that.
I felt bad writing the review.
Okay, next up. Next up is ZB 2404, Jacob Dick, 110 Harris Road. Sam, I want to ask you before, Sam and David, being what you said about attic space, does that change anything about the application we're about to hear since they are also converting an attic above an existing two-car garage into usable space?
This one is a rear yard addition, or rear addition, sorry.
Oh, oh, I'm reading the wrong one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, maybe very nervous for a second.
Okay, this is seeking to construct an 843 square foot, one-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling at 110 Harris Street.
And Madam Chair, for the record, I've reviewed the notice. Everything's in order and the board can hear the application tonight.
Okay, hi.
Hey.
You be sworn in?
Yes. If you could please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If you could state your full name for the record, please.
Jacob Dick.
Okay, you want to tell us about your application?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wish I had a two-car garage. So, members of the board, thank you for hearing my case. Yeah, so my wife and I moved to West Windsor about five or so years ago, March of 2019. And at the time, it was just me and my wife. And so a three-bedroom, one-bath house kind of made sense at the time. But since then, we've had two kids, Ezra and Zach. And it's, the one bathroom's kind of become a bit of a hardship, a bit of a hardship, it's on our statement. It's quite a bit of a hardship. That and storage, storage space in the house. So what we're looking to do is put a, a addition onto the back of the house behind. So if you're looking at the plans, we can, towards the front of the property, Harris Road, and then in the back of the property is actually green space behind. It's a long rectangular property, about 50 by 192 feet long. And so what we're looking to do is add a, basically just extend, the house is basically a T. And we're just looking to extend the house backwards from that, that, the back of the T backwards into the property. So what we would be adding would be a living room, there'd be a dining room, a bedroom with walk-in closets to kind of, to address the storage space problem as well as a second bathroom, which is the main, main point of the application. So that's, yeah, that's kind of open. We're also going to be demolishing the garage. So currently, the house stretches pretty much the entire length of the property. I think there's like 18 inches on one side and there's like 21 inches on the other side. Have to recheck, it's somewhere around there. So on the, on the 108 side, which is towards the north side of the house, there used to be a garage, it's labeled playroom, sometime in the 1950s. It was redone by the previous owners into what we, I think it was entirely short they used to call it, but now we use it for playrooms. That's why it's labeled playroom. And so what we figured we would do, since the playroom is kind of long and thin, we figured we would move, we would demolish that, which would increase the setback on that side of the house to about 11 feet, 10 or 11 feet. So, and then we would move that square footage to the back as well as add on additional square footage in the back. And, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of the application. Yeah, I mean, oh, the other thing is we, we really wanted to prioritize putting the, the addition in the back because it's kind of, it's not visible, it's not as visible from the street. So it was the whole idea. And we thought that extending that back part of the house would kind of make it so that it would basically blend into the rest of the house. It would look pretty much like the same house, but just longer in the back. And, yeah, and it's green space behind there, so nobody, there's nobody behind the house to, that would be object, would object to it, you know, because if I don't invite anybody, well, the town.
So you're going from, are you adding a bedroom? Are you going from three bedrooms to three bedrooms or two bedrooms to three bedrooms? Do you already have three?
Yeah, so there's currently three. What we're going to do is, we're going to go from three to three.
Yeah.
We're just going to basically make the existing master bedroom into a bathroom, because all the plumbing is kind of in that area of the house. And then we're going to put the bedroom in the back.
And you're just adding one bathroom?
Yeah, adding, we're, oh, we're moving the laundry room, it's going to be moved upstairs, but not being added, I guess, I don't know.
So you're going to retain the two existing bedrooms? I'm looking at your plan. You don't give the existing layout, so I'm trying to surmise your plan.
Yeah, yeah, apologies for that. Yeah, so there are two bedrooms in the front, one of them. Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're gonna probably make that one. So the one on the 108 side, towards the north side of the house, our plan was to make that larger and then, so that would be so currently, so currently that, where that, so there's a hallway that goes to that, that bedroom currently, the one on the 108 side. If you keep traveling down that hallway, you run in, on the plans, there's a door that goes into that bedroom. Currently, that door is not there, it's just a straight hallway to where the.
If you, if you look closely, there's a dotted line there, you can see the, where the door opens and the existing wall.
That line is the demolition.
Yeah, apologies for that. Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, we wanted, we wanted to make it a little bit bigger so it matched the other, kind of the square footage of the other bedroom. But that's my younger son Zach's room.
You get a bigger closet as well. You double the closet size.
Yeah.
You're going to keep the existing living room as living room?
Yeah.
But you also have a living area that would be like a family room?
Yeah, that would be in place of the playroom that was demolished, both, it's planning, you know, proposed to be demolished. The main, the main reason for demolishing the playroom was so that there would be more room to, to get to the back of the house. So currently, in order to get from the front of the back of the house, like to do leaf pickup, to drop my leaves off in the front, I have to either.
Increases your side yard.
Yeah, so that, that's the point.
So you're increasing the MIC from what's allowed is 13% and you're going up to 14%? No, I mean, the existing legal is 13%?
Yeah, 17% is the limit on movement coverage. In the code.
The MIC increase doesn't bother me all that much because you've got that big green area behind you. And that, we think about rainwater absorption and so forth, because, because you are adjacent to that large area behind the wooded area. I think that sort of mitigates the, the, what looks like a large increase in the MIC. Just let me ask this question.
Excuse me, John, is your bike on?
Property at all? Oh, it is not?
Yes, it's on.
I'm having a little voice problem, allergy problem today. Oh, so are you having any flooding problems on your land at all?
Not that I, not that I know of. There was, there is, so 114 just doubled the size of their house. So, and actually, we reached out to the town, but they, they said they couldn't really tell whose issue it was, but I've never, it never flooded there before, but they actually doubled the size of their house. And now there's that side yard near where the chimney is, floods a little bit. But other than that, the yard doesn't, the yard is.
We did have some intense rain a couple of months ago.
Yeah, that was the only, the only time.
Did you have any flooding?
Yeah, that was the one time that we had flooding in that part of the, just in that area of the house.
Sam? You had water in the house?
No, no, it's, it was great. The house is actually graded away from, from there. So we, so it's kind of, it wasn't, it wasn't too deep, so it was, it's about, it's like right on the property line, kind of.
Okay.
So he actually graded his house towards the property line.
Oh.
And ours was already graded as is, so all of his water is coming on. Property.
We hadn't thought of that. Well, actually, they didn't come before us. They didn't need an application.
No.
Didn't need a variance.
No.
They never did before. So that was a building, the department issue perhaps.
Yeah.
He increased the grade in that.
Yeah, and they, yeah, they, that was an interesting way they built that house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't want people next door to you causing flooding.
Yeah, I mean, the person who lives there is a very nice guy, but, but, yeah, the flipper who who came in kind of just said, oh, I guess just put dirt down there and, you know.
Do you have adequate storm sewer on your street? Does it, does it handle the floods all right?
Yeah, I think, like, you're talking about the.
The storm sewers in the road. Do you have storm sewers? You must have storm sewers.
Yeah, I think, I believe so. On Harris Road, there's, there's, you're talking about the, the grapes on the side of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we, we have.
So this was a very, very heavy rainstorm we had, so I'm not surprised. And lots of people have some issues, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what the, the town basically said. They couldn't, they couldn't make a determination because it was just so much rain.
Okay, anyway, so because you have the green space behind, I think that helps your situation quite a bit. That can take a lot of water back there. Does it slope back, does your property slope back towards the green area? Or, or does it slope towards you?
I'm not entirely sure. So that part back on that.
No, is that area should flood, is it going to impact your land?
So is it?
If you got a flood behind you in the, in the green area, the large woods, is that going to flow into your property or is it going to go the other way?
Not to my knowledge. I think it's, it's fairly, it's very, it's fairly level, I believe.
Fairly level.
So it would, but, but, yeah, I think it's fairly level. We actually, but, yeah, it's, I think it's fairly, fairly level. There's, there's a bunch of trees back, back there. And we actually have, I think, like 18 trees on the property. So that's kind of what, in that area where it was kind of flooding, I actually planted three trees so that it would try and absorb all of that water.
Do you have a basement in your house?
Yeah.
Is that good water?
No, no, no water. We, we have a dehumidifier down there. It's no like, there's no like bulk water for flooding or any issues like that.
Okay, all right.
So in summary, because John was very sensitive in his questioning, do you have any storm water issues on the property? Storm water drainage issues on the property?
Yes, yeah, we, we have one, but I don't think it's actually caused by our property. It's caused by.
It brought on into your property from another. That's, that's, that's one understanding.
So Sam, can I ask a question on this? Does the engineering department review a property like this?
When they come in for their zoning permit, if you approve the variance, engineering will review it correctly.
And they'll look at the soil disturbance and they will potentially require mitigation for the water?
Whatever they come up with, yep. They'll enforce the, the engineering code as it relates to grading and stormwater and so forth.
Yeah, because I mean, one of my two concerns about this application is it's going to create a potential flood. And he's got water coming from the neighbor and he's going to add his water to that water. It's got to go somewhere.
Did they raise the grade next door to cause this issue? And that.
I don't, yeah, we're not engineers in this.
For the construction department, they shouldn't have allowed a grading change.
I know the house next door, I'm sorry, if I could, I know the house next door on the other side, 108, has a dry well in their backyard. That was an variance that was approved by the committee. I know the house next door, I'm sorry, if I could, um, I know the house next door on the other side, one oh eight, has a dry well in their backyard, that was an variance that was approved by the committee uh, in two thousand and five, I think, which is similar, am I, with a similar MIC.
Right, so we could, could we just, just thinking forward on the application, just say that ask that they do a stormwater
What you can put in there is a condition of approval in, whether it's in nature of engineering, you know, to ensure there's no flooding issues caused by
Yeah, exactly.
If you want to put it on the record and as a condition of approval, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's not finding an issue, it's that this addition will not create an issue, that's what they're looking at.
Not create any more of an issue than you already have.
Um, Terp pointed out, I'm not yet sworn you or Mr. Novak in, because we're just dealing with a witness, but I think it's important that we do swear you in now.
Yes.
So if you could both raise your right hands, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and do you also swear that what you just said was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I know.
You could each just identify yourselves or
Sure, David Novak, N-O-V-A-K, with Birch's Associates, uh, board planning consultant.
Samuel Sertis, township land use manager and zoning officer.
Continue.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much for your testimony, uh, we had a memo that was dated, uh, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, we already asked, or you already answered a couple of questions specifically related to stormwater, um, just let me run through a couple of numbers with the calculation of the floor area ratio, so I believe the dwelling presently has a floor area of around one thousand two hundred and nineteen square feet, is that correct?
Yeah, like twelve twenty, somewhere.
And you're looking to remove the playroom, which has a footprint, and we'll assume a floor area of around a hundred and forty-nine feet?
Yep.
Okay? And the addition is approximately eight hundred and eighty-four square feet?
Uh, eight hundred and forty-three, I think?
Uh, the, oh, I'm sorry, eight forty-three, that's correct, eight forty-three? So, I mean, there's a total floor area proposed of one thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if we were to divide that by ninety-six hundred square feet, that brings us to a floor area of around nineteen point nine percent. And the zoning table says twenty-one point five percent, so I think the zoning table might have accidentally over calculated what's actually proposed. Um, it would still require floor area ratio relief, but if I'm doing that math correct, again, it would be one two one nine, minus the hundred and forty-nine from the playroom. And then plus eight forty-three is one thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet divided by ninety-six hundred square foot, which is a lot of area, that's around nineteen point nine percent, so I think in their zoning table, they had twenty
One point nine.
Twenty-one point nine, or twenty-one point five, so it might be, it would still require the FAR variance relief, but it would be less than what was on the zoning table.
And it would no longer be one of the highest, it would be slightly below the highest in the neighborhood, instead of creating a new high point.
It's always nice to see the number go down rather than up. That was nineteen point nine two percent. And I, I apologize, I had a typo in my memo, I had it as twenty point three percent, because I misread that floor area that's being added, um. Okay, so that, all right, and that sounds accurate, too?
Yeah, it sounds
That comes out to twenty-eight hundred sixty-six square feet?
Nineteen hundred and fourteen.
Oh, one thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet.
What is that?
It'd be one thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet, it would be the
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one thousand two hundred and nineteen
Oh, okay.
Minus one forty-nine, which is the playroom, which is getting removed. And then adding the eight forty-three, which is the addition. One thousand nine hundred and thirteen square feet divided by the floor area, I'm sorry, divided by the lot area, which is nine thousand six hundred square feet. And that equals nineteen point nine two percent. Um, okay, uh, regarding the, the addition to the back, um, can you talk about what type of facade materials you're gonna use, or is it going to match the existing building, or do everything over again, or?
Yeah, so our plan is the, the existing, it's vinyl, so there's vinyl, light blue vinyl siding, or, or all right, our, our plan currently is to re-site the house with the same vinyl siding with the same color, so it'll look the idea is it'll just look like the same, it'll look like one continuous house, and we want to match what was existing currently, so it kind of doesn't look like a different house, and still looks like similar house, that's, that's the current one.
Okay, um, the addition is going into the back, can you just talk about what the visual impact would be of that addition from Harris Road, and just give the board a little idea of, you know, what's on either side of your property when it comes to your neighbors?
Yeah, so currently, um, and so as you're coming down Harris Road, say, coming from like Alexander Road, which is by the um, PJ's Pancake House, that, that area, if you're coming down Harris Road, going, I believe that's south on the plant, roughly south on the plans. Um, the first thing, the first house you'll see before our house is a yellow, yellowish house, uh, that's one oh eight Harris Road. Um, and, uh, they have a driveway right next to ours that and it's right on our property line, uh, that like goes right up against the property line, and then what you would see is, you would see the, you might see a little bit of the left, the, um, north, north wall of the property. Um, north wall of the addition, I don't think you'd be able to see that far back, but, um, it's plausible, and then as you're going down Harris Road on the other side of the property, uh, about twenty feet back from the property line, um, which is roughly twenty-one-ish feet, maybe twenty-two-ish feet from uh, our, the side of our house, which is that living room, that, that little outpost living room area, uh, with the, with the bow window, um. On that side of the property, there is a twenty-five hundred square foot, um, house, one fourteen, that's about twenty feet back from our, uh, property, okay?
And there's, uh, I know along the north end, uh, there's existing vegetation there?
Um.
Along the yellow house property line?
Yeah, so we have a few bushes, uh, we have, um, two trees, uh, or two, uh, deciduous trees, and then there are eight, uh, eight, uh, pine trees that we believe, it's, it's kind of a, we, we believe they're on our property, they're on the property line, the, the owner of one oh eight, it's probably too much information, but on the one oh eight, actually planted them there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but they're on our, our side of the fence, the owner just put in a new fence, so they on our side of the fence, there's eight trees there.
Okay.
Um, and that's that's what's currently
I was just thinking, one way to think about the effect of the extension of your house is what fraction of your backyard it's gonna take up? Uh, how deep is your backyard after, behind your precious property?
Uh, so currently, the backyard, I think, is a hundred and twenty-four feet, so the
It's gonna take another thirty.
Yeah, so it ends up being about ninety-three.
So you still have considerable backyard.
Yeah, so there, yeah, in terms of water, there should be a good amount, um.
It's almost ninety-four feet.
Yeah, and that backs up to the
And it backs up to permanently preserved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was actually just out in that area on, uh, last Friday, so. Uh, those are all the questions I have for now, I don't know, the board would like me to go through what the criteria is, or if you'd like to ask questions first, and then go back to that.
A curious question. Have you checked on the availability of the siding, to match the siding, such as your customer?
Uh, I have, I haven't, but I have seen, I have looked kind of on, like, Lowe's, first really looked, uh, so the thing about, so there, there is, there is, they seem to sell blue, it, it would look slightly darker, because yeah, it's like, I don't remember when they put that in, I think it was like thirty
If it puts anybody's mind, that eased the strike ended right before this meeting started, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might be a little more of a
I, I would not object if you wanted to change the siding color, I mean, it's vinyl, okay, vinyl is vinyl.
Is it light blue or light gray?
Yeah, it's like a light blue, it's kind of turned more like grayish over time. Honestly, we like the color, we, we like the color as it is, but there's it.
How was that side? Do you have any idea?
Uh, I'm not, it's definitely Okay, so, yeah, she, oh, yeah, this is, yeah, that, that's Kevin, he
Yeah.
So, but basically, just for the record, currently, you have two driveways that really butt right up against each other.
Yeah.
With that addition, where the garage used to be, and you're gonna take that down, so you're gonna increase the distance between the two houses, the house next, from the house next door.
Yeah.
You're gonna go from one point eight feet to eleven feet.
Yeah.
As a side yard to your next door neighbor, you're gonna increase the side yards
Yeah.
By le, over eleven feet.
Yeah, um, I think their house on that side is about ten, the, the driveway is about, the start of their driveway is about eleven feet from our where our new side would be, and
Yeah.
Theirs, their driveway is about ten feet wide-ish, ten, eleven-ish feet.
Yeah.
So it'd be like twenty feet from their house.
So if you take the opening right there, and put two feet on each side, you'd have, you know, just a little up to the eleven meter.
That's all right, please. A substantial increase in the side yard from the neighbor.
Yeah, you're adding a space, too. Don't go over foundation.
Um, yeah, we're, yeah, so we're, we're in between, depending on what the cost is, we, we want to add a basement, um, that's our, our, our goal, because we can have more storage space, um. But, um, it might, it's either a basement or a crawl space, currently in the plans, we have it set as a basement.
That he wants to know. Is there gonna be a basement or no?
Um, yeah, that, that's the current plan, that's the current plan.
But you're saying if it's, the construction cost comes in too high, you may cut that to a crawl space?
Yeah, that's it. Uh, we were thinking about, the, the architect actually said that, that a slab, because the house is higher, higher up off the ground, there is not wouldn't be feasible.
Other questions of the applicant or David?
That's, that's a survey marker.
Yes.
Survey.
The survey marker.
Hmm, yes. Now, we, uh, we do go over the statutory criteria in this memo dated, uh, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Board has heard this many times, but this is a D four, floor area ratio variance, so typically for a, a D application, uh, the applicant needs to stress positive and the negative criteria. Um, for certain D one use variance applications, so for example, we were talking about the Wawa application from years ago. Applicant would need to make a sighting, or, uh, 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 argument that the site is particularly suited for the use. For a D four floor area ratio application, you don't really need to do that, because the use is already permitted there. Really what the board and the applicant need to determine is whether or not the site can accommodate the problems associated with not meeting that standard, and in this case, it's floor area ratio. Why do we have floor area ratio? Well, for a couple of reasons, one, to, quote, control the intensity of a site. Uh, in this case, we have heard that the number of bedrooms is remaining the same. Other things that we look at would be light air and open space, uh, physical appearance, stormwater. These are all things that the board needs to consider when addressing a floor area ratio application. Uh, so far, we've heard testimony that, uh, number of bedrooms will not be removed, uh, and that there will be a sided portion of the building that existing playroom, which will be removed as well, which should help open up some light air and open space, at least along that portion of the existing house, um. Just some of the considerations for the board.
Yeah.
I have a quick question for Sam. Sam, if it were determined that this would create a stormwater issue, would, in your opinion, based on your experience, would this site be able to accommodate mitigation measures? Would it be feasible amount of expense, or would it have would it have a piece of that sphere of property?
I, I'm not familiar with the topography of the property, and the engineering office would take a, a look at that, but as an engineer would tell you, it's only money that would prevent something from being taken care of, so.
Yeah, it's a, if it's relevant, I'm a, like, I'm actually a licensed engineer in New Jersey.
Yeah, you got it.
It's, um, uh, mechanical engineer. Um, but, uh, yeah, you can, I mean, this type of thing can be resolved with, um, there, there's dry well you can put out, or, um, some places have some pumps that can pump water out of the property onto the street if it's, if it's an issue. Um, but, uh, I mean, in my, in my, um, view, I, I, there's like, there's like ninety-three feet of rear yard space, which I, I, and a ton of, there's like eighteen trees on the property. Um, and there's a green space behind it, so I, I think it shouldn't be an issue, um. But, yeah, I mean, it would have to be under review from the, uh, engineering office, like, like Sam would say.
Uh, ju, just a question, uh, in general, and talking about flooding, do the neighbors in general have issues with flooding in that area? I don't live in that area, so I don't know myself. But, uh, is it a, a common problem when you have a severe rainstorm? Do, do a lot of people have problems with that, or do they not?
Uh, I don't believe any of them have like, any, on their, on their, like, on their property, or
Yeah, or in the, getting into their house, their basement or anything?
Uh, not to my knowledge, um, I know some houses have some pumps on their
Have some pumps.
On their, in their houses, um.
That means there is
Do you have a sump pump? No?
No, there's, there's no sump, we haven't had any water issues, but, um, but, yeah, there's no sump pump.
So if need be, would, he could get a sump pump? All right, it's pretty unusual not to have a sump pump in New Jersey anyway, so.
Yeah, it's pretty wet state.
You have to, yeah. Other questions, comments? I'd like to open the public hearing then, unless you have something else you want to go over. If we have ever, any members of the public that would like to get up and speak, please do so.
Before you start, I need to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand, please, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your full name for the record.
Kevin Ranallo.
How do you spell your last name?
R-A-N-A-L-L-O.
Thank you.
And your address, please?
One zero six Harris Road.
One zero six, okay.
Okay, um, so just a little background for me. Uh, the house he currently lives in was my grandmother's house, it was the house that my mother grew up in. They were in it since the, probably mid-forties. Uh, I grew up going there basically every day, playing in the yards, doing all that, so I'm really familiar with the property. So to address like the floodwater issue, I can say that growing up, there really wasn't an issue. Uh, at one point, there was a water issue, but it was to do with the back porch was cracked. And it was leaning towards the house, so it was going through the sill plate. That was addressed, the basement water issues were fixed, I know because my brother and I were the ones to fix them. Um, and as far as like the backyard property flooding, I don't recall it ever flooding, except for, you know, tarantula down, or, and it wasn't even really a flood, it was like puddles, right? Um, where the yard would be down a little bit, um. Ever since the house of one fourteen was put in, the grading could probably have been done better. The pipes coming off of the gutter could have been done better. Some water, when it does rain heavy, does come down and go into like where the two yards meet, it kind of swells, it's kind of a gully.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they could have, the flipper could have done a better job. Um, other than that, the really, I don't ever recall seeing any issues with the flood, you know, flooding. Uh, I don't ever recall the woods behind there ever flooding, uh. Uh, I don't ever recall the woods behind there ever flooding, uh. My yard, I know the same thing. We have. One property is higher than the other, and it kind of means. Obviously, heavy rains, the water goes there and it usually goes out to the road. Um, there are storm drains on Harris, a few houses down. Uh, going towards the high school and then the other direction, it kind of goes down to Alexander. Um. Trying to think what else. As far as that goes, so. You know, obviously we'd have to go to the engineer, but from what I recall, I don't. Ever remember any like major water problems. Uh. Yeah, and I think it's nice that, like, I think I spoke about this, maybe not in this meeting, but another meeting. That when we were selling the house, people wanted to purchase the house. To knock it down and build something monstrous. And they kept on saying, we're not going to pay this because the property is not big enough. They came in, loved the house, loved the character of it, and it's nice to see that they want to stay. And grow their family and, you know, put an addition on. My family did that in probably the eighties, maybe. With the house that I'm in now. Uh, neighbors down the street did that. So it's nice to see a family come in and say, we want to stay, we're going to put a reasonable addition in. Uh, so we can grow our family here. And we're seeing that, I think, kind of a lot in that area now, where there's a turnover. Uh, it's both good and bad, but. You know, more kids in the neighborhood. It's really nice, so. But overall, I, you know, I, I can appreciate what he's doing.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, uh, take a motion to close the public here. Moved by John Raider, second.
Second.
Second by Henry. All in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Comments?
Well, I had only two concerns. One was that this was going to become one of the highest FARs in the neighborhood. Um, and, uh, and the stormwater because of the high MEC. And, uh, I guess we've reduced the, uh, we've reduced the, uh, FAR a little bit, so. Makes me a little more comfortable. Was nineteen, I'd be really happy, but you know, I can live with.
That's nineteen fourteen.
Pardon? It's nineteen point.
Nineteen fourteen.
Oh, the, uh. Oh, it goes, FAR is.
Yes.
Is nineteen, is, is, is nineteen point nine, though.
Oh, you're right.
Right, and so there's only two properties that are, are higher than that, one oh six Harris and nine seventy six Alexander. So it's still going to be one of the largest by FAR houses and by square feet, it's pretty up there, but. I like the fact that they're increasing the side yard, largely hiding, hiding the addition, lots deep. So if they can accommodate the, uh, water, I'm pretty happy.
Yeah, I think it looks like an improvement to the neighborhood. Uh, like, so, uh, I, I think this, this is, this is good, uh. We're getting a lot of these applications now, and I think most of them are really on the positive side. They are improving the neighborhood and we know the pressure that everybody's under, uh, with, uh, real estate, uh, prices and mortgage, uh. Rates and all that. So this is a trend that we're seeing. And I'd much rather see this than people building second, uh, units behind their house on a section, you know, these ADUs, uh, that, those are not. Not the greatest thing, I think. But if you can enlarge an existing house and still make it reasonable, I think that's a good trend. I'd support that.
Anybody else?
So the planning board is dealing with, uh, variant review of, uh, bulk regulations and. Uh, the like for Bariant City. Now, this property is like one or two properties outside of the Bariant City.
No, no, it's in there. It looks like it should be.
I thought it was that like right outside.
It's very close. So if you look at page, uh.
Okay, so it's, it's, it is within.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, what, what, uh, um. Yeah, what the applicant is doing is following those guidelines in terms of. I'm doing an addition, yes, but I'm putting it in the back of the property. It's not visible from the street. It's not going to be. Uh, look like, you know, some big thing just humped onto the front of the house. Or the second. So, uh, and, and in terms of maintaining the, the character, the architectural character, just extending the siding in the roof lines. Uh, to cover the, the new area, um, even though we haven't codified that. It with the, our period city review yet, he's abiding by it. And so I, I, I think this will work out well.
Yeah, I would say, I would agree that. It is more square footage than I normally would. Uh, like to see, but I think there's so many positives to this that that overrules that. The fact that you're adding on the back, which is, as Curtis said, that's what, that's what we're pushing for. The fact that you're, um, giving your neighbor more space and yourself, yourself more space on the side. I think that's a really important factor. Retaining the character that, of the, uh, neighborhood, those are really. At least to me, more critical even than, is it this many square foot versus this many square feet? I, I think you've. You've hit the important features. What I would say. Anybody else? Yeah. And it's not going to be torn down? That's a big thing.
And, and pretty much that's been like the character of a lot of our applications in this neighborhood. Have been that type of thing where a family, a growing family wants, needs the additional space to maintain their residence. In West, in Bariant City and Westminster.
We need a motion on the floor. I will move to approve CB twenty four.
Motion made to approve by John Raider. Do we have a second? Who said that? Yeah?
We discussing.
Second by Daniel. What's that?
Are we discussing conditions at all or are you just?
Well.
Is it? Okay. Okay, I thought she was moving to.
Before we vote.
Okay.
After the motions are made.
Okay, sorry.
What I have written down is, um. I don't really have any negatives. Uh, I think that it, this application does recognize and preserve the established character of the neighborhood. That's a positive. We have to legally answer the question of whether this site can accommodate any problems associated with a larger FAR. And I think we all agree that it can. The fact that they are putting the addition on the back. Uh, is a big plus and the fact that they are, um, increasing the privacy of the na- for the neighbor. By substantial amount, by, by ten feet, by almost eleven feet. Um, so they're actually improving a setback problem. By taking down that old addition. Uh, they're not adding a bedroom. They're adding only one bathroom. Um, this house ha- will have ten feet approximately, ten feet on one side and eleven feet on the other side. Which is pretty good for a property that's only probably fifty feet wide, somewhere around fifty feet wide. So it's nicely centered. They still will have ninety four feet behind the addition to the property line, to the rear property line. Which also backs up to permanently preserved land. So there's a substantial amount of free. Property. And that's also important because that can accommodate if there are any drainage issues. Something can be done, which the township will determine if there's any drainage issues. But it looks like there's more than enough property there that would be able to handle whatever would have to be, uh, made for drainage purposes. And the engineer, I guess, is going to review water issue if, if needed. Um. Besides retaining the character of the neighborhood, it also means that it, it won't be a tear down, which is important to the neighborhood, the character. Think that's it. Is there any other legal determination we should add?
I, I think you've actually covered it quite well.
Okay. Um, if everybody agrees with that. Summary, uh, let's, uh, call for the vote.
Church?
Yes.
Yes. See you later.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you for coming in. You're approved by us anyway. Good luck.
Likely for November?
So do you think December then too? So November, December, expecting me.
Well, November, we said this.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor, aye. We're done. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Trishka, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. I might see you in November.
Sam is like me, working the facts around, working the shadows.
Yeah, and I think you did such a great summary. Yeah, you did a good, you some. You know, what's interesting is that.
Well, I know you shared one chapter.